Okay, good evening. It's six thirty, our new starting time. Wednesday, the third of May, twenty twenty-three, and this is the New Replanning Board. And the first thing is attendance and determination of quorum. We have three members. We're all here the last time. We have Randy, who was not here the last time. You caught up?
I have, yes.
Okay. So we have a quorum, and everybody's eligible to vote. And so the third thing on the agenda is the minutes of the prior meeting. I am entertaining thoughts, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Okay. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as written. All those in favor? One, two, three, it's passed. Let's see. Business continued. A Barker Mountain express replacement lift.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion to make, please.
Okay.
The board would like to read along as... Becky, you already got a copy? You guys will fight about it? Okay, Mr. Chairman. Whereas at the adjournment of the board's last meeting held on April nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, the board had completed its review of application number twenty-three-two-seventy-six. Barker expressed chairlift replacement and was awaiting for the state of the department of environmental protection, also known as DEP, to issue a permit to the applicant before the board proceeded to consider final approval for the application. Since that adjournment, DEP completed its review and forwarded its approval on May first, twenty twenty-three. Whereas the board's engineering consultant, Goal Palmer, reviewed the DEP's findings of fact, conclusions, and conditions, and forwarded four conditions of approval for the board's consideration. Therefore, I move that the board, prior to considering final approval of the application number twenty-three-two-seventy-six, consider the additional conditions of approval recommended by its consultant, Goal Palmer. Before we go into looking at the four conditions of approval, we need to... the motion is to do that.
Okay.
We've already done conditions of approval. We've moved on. Now we've had a situation come up where I am making a motion that we go back and consider four more conditions of approval.
Can we do that?
Yes.
Yes?
Okay.
You've made that motion?
Correct.
You want to second it? Oh, me too. I'm gonna let you handle this one. Okay. It's been moved and seconded that we examine the conditions of approval? Or do we examine these?
The four additional conditions of approval, which will be individual motions. If we approve this motion, we'll go and consider those new conditions of approval.
Okay. So we're going to... We're gonna... we're making a motion that we consider four additional conditions of approval.
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor? One, two, three. Okay. So what you got for us, Ted?
A motion to include the following as a condition of approval. Erosion control details will be included on the final construction plans, and the erosion control narrative will be included in the project specifications to be provided to the construction contractor. I think this is probably already done. This is... And that's my motion.
That's your motion. And I'll second that motion. All those in favor? One, two, three. Okay. That one's done.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that we include the following as a condition of approval. Storm sewer grip and sediment material removed from storm water control structures during maintenance activities must be disposed of in compliance with the with the main solid waste management rules.
I saw that on the DEP.
I know, that's his song.
So you've made the motion.
I'll second it.
And it's been seconded.
You seconded it, Bruce?
I did.
It's been moved and seconded that storm water grip and sediment materials removed from the storm water control structures during maintenance activities must be disposed of in compliance with the main solid waste management rules. All those in favor?
Banning a hundred right now.
Can I make a request of the board?
Sure.
Similar to what we do at Select Board for the audio recording? Just, you know, one, two, three, just count them off, huh? So we know we have three affirmative votes?
Yep. Oh, okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to include the following as a condition of approval. Applicants shall retain the design engineer or other qualified professional engineer to oversee the construction of the storm water best management practices, also known as BMPs.
Okay. Pete, who is your design engineer?
This guy.
Okay.
Are you gonna have Hawk inspecting anything for this?
I think you guys are gonna have some inspections.
Yeah.
But the DEP didn't stipulate any additional inspections.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that the applicant shall retain the design engineer, which is Peter Roberts, or other qualified professional engineer to oversee the construction of the storm water best management practices. All those in favor?
One.
Two. Three. How's that?
Good, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to include the following as a condition of approval. Within thirty days from completion of the entire system, the applicant shall submit an as-built plan of the project and a log of inspection reports detailing the items inspected, photographs taken, and the dates of each inspection to the town. As a clarification, this is already required to go to the DEP, so he can just send a copy to us at the same time.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that within thirty days from completion of the entire system, the applicant shall submit an as-built plan of the project and a log of inspection reports detailing the items inspected, photographs taken, and dates of each inspection to the town. All those in favor? One. Two. Three.
Mr. Chairman, the following motion will take this application to completion. So before I enter my motion, I'll return the floor to you to see if anybody else has any comments or business of this... on this application.
Run that by me again.
My follow... my next motion will be for final approval.
Okay.
Before I enter that motion, I will yield to any board member who has other questions or comments.
Thoughts, my dear?
I'm not a board member. I'm good.
You're good. Okay, good. Let's see. Okay, so we talked about the performance guarantee requirement.
I did.
We settled that.
And that's... the check has been... obviously, the check deposited for that.
Okay. And waivers, we talked about that.
Right. The one waiver request was, which is no longer viable, was declined.
Okay, so you put a check mark there. Are any conditions of approval placed on this application?
Yes.
All sorts of them.
Right.
And the next check mark is, the board moves with a formal motion to approve or deny the application. I guess you're up.
All right. All right. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. Whereas the applicant has no outstanding violations of the Uniform Development Review Ordinance.
Is that what that stands for? Okay.
Whereas the following conditions of approval apply to application twenty-three-dash-two-seventy-six. Applicant will ensure proper concrete washout procedures are followed as per Main Erosion and Sediment Control Best Management Practices, BMPs, Manual for Design and Engineers, Section A, six. Applicant will conduct a highway traffic study during the winter of twenty-twenty-three to twenty-twenty-four, which will include, at a minimum, Sunday River Road, Skiway Road, and Monkey Brook Road. The study will include high-traffic-volume weekends and meet the standards set by main DOT. The installation of a ball valve with valve box in Note Number Six of Drawing Number Three of the application entitled Top Terminal Site Plan is required. The spillway detail, Drawing Number Four of the application entitled Storm Water Basin Details, shall have an impermeable barrier such as pressure-treated wood or concrete added within the riprap to prevent flow through the riprap below the spillway invert elevation. After construction is complete, the applicant will provide proof that storm water release complies with the main DEP requirements of twenty-four to forty-eight hours. Erosion control details will be included on the final construction plans, and the erosion control narrative will be included in the project specifications to be provided to the construction contractor. Storm sewer grip and sediment materials removed from the storm water control structures during maintenance activities must be disposed of in compliance with the main solid waste management rules. Applicants shall retain the design engineer or other qualified professional engineer to oversee the construction of the storm water best management practices. Within thirty days from completion of the entire system, the applicant shall submit an as-built plan of the project and a log of inspection reports detailing the items inspected, photographs taken, and dates of each inspection to the town. Whereas, the planning board has determined the facts of application twenty-three-dash-two-seventy-six. Whereas, the planning board has determined that all the requirements for approval in the Uniform Development Review Ordinance have been met. Therefore, the planning board gives its final approval to application twenty-three-two-seventy-six Barker Express Chairlift Replacement. And that is my motion.
I listened very carefully.
I did.
And I will be happy to second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve all the verbiage that Ted just came across with. And that's a lot. Pete, thoughts?
I don't see anything here we haven't discussed before.
That's sort of what I thought. Seeing we've hashed this all over, it's been moved and seconded, do we approve it? All those in favor?
One.
Two. Three. How's that, Pete?
Good.
So we'll need those conditions of approvals on the final plan proceeding through?
Yep.
Are those done?
Yep.
You wanna do that now?
Well, we don't have all those. There were at least three... there were four new conditions of approval that...
He's been sent those. Are those on there?
Yeah, I came up with a couple different... I anticipated you guys would need those conditions of approval, so I came up with a couple different ways of wording them that I think may put in ten of what's listed here. So I guess we'll take a look at it and we'll see what you think.
Let's try it out.
As quick as you used to be, I mean.
So I added the... I added this storm water erosion control details, verbatim, from what Will said.
Right.
And then this one, I just referenced the condition of approval number five in the DEP permit.
What about your employment guarantee?
Hmm?
Your employment guarantee?
Why not here?
Which we just put on there.
Yeah, it added some wording on a different sheet. I wasn't sure how you guys would interpret that, so.
I don't know.
So this one, I just reworded it and said that we'll obtain a qualified professional engineer.
But this is different from... this doesn't have all the words here. Or it doesn't?
I just reworded number six, because I wasn't exactly sure how you guys would interpret it, so.
No, okay, so it has... you combined both in there?
Yep.
Okay. That's probably... I'm gonna be... I'm gonna be up something else.
Say your part.
So we got the... you got the... You wrote the... So we got the... you got the concrete washout. You got the... Also, in your best management practices sheet, by the way.
Yep.
Highway traffic. Yeah, you got the traffic. You got the spillway. Then the installation of the valve box.
That's on sheet three.
That's already in the drawing. Okay. So these are the same as you just...
Yeah, I just reprinted the cover page, because like I said, I wasn't exactly sure how you guys would interpret it.
And the forty... the twenty-four to forty-eight hours there. Erosion. So, okay. Yeah. That's... it seems to be... So they're not the top cover that we use?
These don't worry, I can pull those off.
Oh, it's all there, Gooch?
Okay. You know, can't do that. You gotta use a...
You're all... you don't need to use anything special anymore.
You don't?
Nope. You just can't.
Oh.
Don't bend, don't...
It just can't be a feather dipped in an equal. Or a quid, yeah, that's using it.
Back in the day with the Mylars, they had a special pen. Right.
Yeah. I don't think we need Mylars for psych...
You don't use Mylars at all?
Oh, I see. I don't already have a board psych... It's just... I've already transferred property.
They're just gonna go here.
Self-bought. Self-bought. He's a... Yeah. That explains a lot of things. We sure know it, don't we? I'll let you bring it up. Is this better if you always say? Very artistic.
Becky, did you get my email about not having a full set of complete electronic drawings for mail?
Um...
It was probably...
Yes, I sent... what I sent you was the drawing that hadn't compiled them all yet.
Not necessary until you're back from work. It was today, right?
Well, for one day.
Yeah.
That was the time only.
Was that your thing? I think it's her thing.
Oh, yeah. It's okay, I got one.
Do you have?
I didn't see them.
Yeah, I just wanna be able to refer to them in the final tests. The back ones.
I didn't see a bird.
Yeah, that would be...
So we're just gonna co-late these now.
Okay. If you had like eleven by seventeen, that's probably...
This. We'll put it on. Three, four. Please look aside. Six, seven, eight.
One, two, three.
Yes, take two, seven.
Thank you, good.
It goes back. Six, seven, eight. Actually, it goes back.
Yeah, the original sign has the decoration on there.
Drop that one.
Maybe like, you know, like, you know, first one. First one down there. Call, hard call.
No. Um... You want one of these two, Joe?
Go, thanks.
The guy who's on...
I can just take a picture of it. That's all I need to refer to in the final test.
The seven of those. Speech out there.
Do you...
Oh, um...
Mostly what it talks about is the title of each map? So I can refer to them in the final test?
Luke. Julie, you want me to set this other copy here?
Yes, please.
Kate, yeah. Yeah, he's on the end.
How old is Paul Long on there?
No, I didn't see him. I didn't see, uh...
He was on the original, too.
Yeah, I didn't see, um... Oh, Mr. Bailey from the water district. I didn't see, um, Stuart Cross. Stuart Cross is not here.
Yeah.
And the Penwells.
Six, seven.
Joel and Albert and my brother, Don.
Williamson Buster is someone.
I don't need to do the scan.
Paul Buster's in there a lot.
I don't need to do the scan.
Just the actor.
I just took the...
I'm gonna be right away.
I'm on it here.
Um...
Not yet. Josh?
Um, yeah, there was another one of these floating around somewhere, so.
Mine's already taken.
Yeah.
Peter, did I send this to you? And take this from Paul Palmer? I'll make copies.
I don't think so.
So you have paper copy and...
Well, no, it was part of his package.
He just reused it, I guess.
I don't know. I did. It was part of the male hill package. I'm just sifting through all this anyway. And I found... Are we ready to go to the next one, gentlemen?
Go on, so we'll make the copy something.
Okay, go wait for your round. Ready, Jerome?
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda, B. Continuation of the Sunday River Skiway map, R seventeen lot one. On map, R thirteen lot thirteen. Subsection of New Gollum Iron Three Place Lift on Male Hill. R seventeen lot two A three. Taxed out of what was lost to the line with R seventeen dash one. Okay?
Sorry, that's an old note. It was tree growth, they put them all together. Since it's been taken care of.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, a point of order, please.
Okay.
I received a letter from the applicant dated March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, addressed to me, advising me that I am a butter to this project. And therefore, I request that the other members of the board make a motion to review my ability to continue on sitting with this application or not. And as reference, if you... The southwest corner of my lot is above nine hundred and fifty feet to the northeast corner of two... What is that? Eight, two A three, or whatever it is called.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
And the distance from the southwest corner of my lot to the closest site of this project is two thousand feet, give or take a couple of feet.
Okay, and you would like us to do?
Well, I've been notified I'm a butter, and therefore, I am putting it out to the board to consider whether or not the board would like me to recuse myself or to continue on as a member of the board deliberating this application.
Well... Does your lot actually abut this lot?
Across the river. Up a grade.
But, oh, so you actually own on the other side of the river?
I own on the other side of the river. And if you take lot number... What is it? Two...
Two A three.
Two A three. The entire... how many acres it is. And look at that, and my lot, there's less than a thousand-foot separation between the two. However, the applicant's site plan is... The closest installation of the lift is to my lot is over two thousand feet. Because of the location of the proposed lift is more in the center of two A three than on the corner. But, if you go by the U D R O definition of an abutter, it says the Y. And therefore, the applicant gave me due notification that I'm on the butter. And I am bringing it up to the board for consideration.
And how about you, Brooks?
I don't really land it outside of...
Okay.
But I guess my consideration, Ted, would be that, do you feel as being an abutter and with all these...
do you feel as being an abutter and with all these distant measurements and things like that will affect your, or bring you bias upon this application?
I do not believe so, but I will leave that determination to my fellow board members. And if the applicant wants to chip in, if the board wants to listen to them.
Pete, you got any problems?
Well, I guess my only concern was there was a letter submitted to the board by someone with the same last name and the same address as Ted, so I don't know how that connection works out. That was kind of the only indication I got that made me concerned about it, a sort of bias.
That was, it's a piece of correspondence, I don't believe it's been presented to the board yet.
Yes, it has.
My wife requested, I guess it was, because you read it off. My wife requested that there be a public hearing on this as her standing as the resident.
Yeah, from February, yeah.
Yeah. Seems as though we already discussed having a public hearing.
No, we have not, because the application has not been complete, deemed complete.
Oh!
We are basically starting fresh tonight, because the previous, original application was deemed uncomplete by the board, and then the applicant tabled it until his more pressing application got, uh, and the application didn't, no.
Okay.
And so we're basically starting a fresh heat.
Fresh sheet?
Well, I mean, it's not completely fresh, I mean, he's already paid the application fee.
And the application number, and the application number has been issued and whatnot.
And he's already submitted it and stuff. So Bruce, would you like me to make a copy of what you've just started, so John can have it? You can keep your copy?
That makes sense.
That's a good idea. Right, let me look it through.
It doesn't completely start all over, you're not submitting a brand new application?
Uh, no, I think we'll get into it, I submitted a letter kind of outlining all the deficiencies that was, were found in the first draft, I guess we'll call it. Some responses and some changes were changed.
One part, one part of me says, well, you're tainted because your wife requested a public hearing. And the other part of me is going, well, I always thought we'd use a public hearing on this anyway. But, um, I got no problem.
Does that, I mean, if you feel that you would have any bias towards your working on this project, that, that would?
I will do the same diligence I've done on this, as I've done on my other application reviews.
Then I don't have any issue with it.
I don't have any issue. So, do we do this as a motion?
I would appreciate it, we should do that.
Make a motion that we allow Ted Baker as an abutter to this project to continue on the planning board with no bias.
Okay. I'm not sure that's quite right, but that'll work. I'll second that. The question is, do we get Randy to vote on this? So we'll have three people?
No, you're a quorum.
Two's quorum? Okay.
Sorry, buddy.
It's okay. As, as Bruce just said, I'll, all those in favor?
I think you need to second it first.
Oh, I gotta second, I thought I already did that. I second what Bruce said. And now we'll vote on it. All those in favor?
One.
Two. Or is it actually two and three?
No.
No?
Two is fine.
Okay.
Thank you for your confidence in my unbiased opinions.
Back to the work at hand. Thoughts, Peter?
About what? Well, I guess I made, I had a question that was fielded, I didn't really get answered, but I sort of passed that now because the motion passed, so thoughts? I submitted a revised application, I submitted a bunch of supporting documents, so curious if you guys have had a chance to go through that?
Okay. Why don't you do that? Oh, let's see. So looking at our checkup sheet, we do have jurisdiction. He's provided proof of ownership. We've gone down to three, does any board member have bias or conflict? We discuss that. Is any additional escrow needed? We already discussed that. The applicant is, inform the applicant that all revised and additional documents must be submitted at least ten days prior. The applicant has paid his fees, we're gonna sign a number. Okay. I suppose we have to look at, is the application complete? Okay, which one of these is it?
It says revised four nineteen twenty-twenty-three on the front.
It says one again?
Revised four nineteen twenty-twenty-three.
Four nineteen, okay. That one. Four five. Four nineteen.
I was looking for a copy of each of these. Just discovered one or not. Don't the application? So, we're looking at the one that says revised four nineteen twenty-three, that we just said. So we're actually reviewing it at five.
Peter, is it three bridges or five?
Two, one, two, and there's five existing.
So, um, oh, page one of six. It shows two bridges at the middle left, and these. So what's that on the middle right? That's not a bridge?
Yeah, sorry, asking, I didn't print out it.
Construction, three bridges. There are some bridges that are already constructed.
Right.
So one of those.
So these are all existing bridges?
Oh, you already have five bridges?
Yeah, we got two of those going down here.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that there are already five bridges. Okay. Thank you. So it's better. If I look at it upside down, then I can see where I'm going. Coming up Monkey Brook, there's Trillium here, so you want. These are the bridges that are already in existence. And then a building. Let's do the, assuming that this is. This is the golf course, isn't it?
Peter, has Ski and T even in any contact with you?
I've sent them two or three abutter notices, and they haven't gotten any response.
They've had plenty of opportunity for the trail, it was relatively close to their.
Yeah. I know they're aware of it, because people other than me have talked to them, but they haven't sent any formal responses to the board that I know of.
So in this map, Peter, though, you really haven't, you haven't put the roads in, just the trails.
What about, do they have any new roads?
No, I know that, but there's, for reference, I guess, you know, for. Because I had to turn it upside down to orient myself, you know, like coming up the Monkey Brook Road, so there's Trillium here and there's Wilderness. So then, and basically Morganite is over through here somewhere.
Well, it's this washed out line here, sorry.
I don't have my glasses, I can't, I don't even have my glasses on, so I can't see.
I think I have D sheets in my car, if you don't mind.
No, no, that's fine, that's fine. Yeah, I can see, now that you pointed it out, yeah. But the writing's up like that, so.
Those are being left handed.
That's the problem with them, too, is everything I do is in line north, and everything everyone else does is standing at the bottom looking up. So they're always like.
So, Peter, this document. Yep. Let's see, the first one is from the, from the Army Corps.
Yep.
And the second one is from D E P. And is this the approval of your project?
No, I requested a waiver similar to the last application, and part of the reason that it was voted down by the board was because they said that I didn't present examples of other state and federal permits with similar conditions, so I just put in those, one is a permit, not a permit, a letter of non-jurisdiction, I guess, from the feds. And then the other one is the D E P permit from the last Merrill Hill Ski Lift Bridges and Trails permit, just to demonstrate kind of what these normal look like, and then highlight the language in there that says that I can't proceed without rule from the town. So what I'm seeking is a similar condition from the town, if I don't have the D E P permit in hand, just saying you're approved until you get, that you can't start until you get the D E P permit.
Okay.
Are you referring to the highlighted section on page eleven of fourteen?
Oh, yeah. Yep, I highlighted the relevant sections.
Which reads, "Compliance with all applicable laws. The applicant shall secure and comply with all applicable federal, state, and local license permits, authorization, conditions, agreements, and orders prior to or during construction and operation as appropriate." So, that wording to me isn't the catch twenty-two that you keep referring to.
Is it? I'm not clear.
Well, you were, previously you have stated that, well, the D E P says we can't go, we can't proceed without town approval, and the town's saying we can't proceed without D E P approval. The catch twenty-two.
Oh, I thought that's what that said.
I don't read it that way, it just says that you can't start construction until you have all your permits.
Yeah, from the town.
From everybody?
Yeah.
So.
So what I'm trying to explain, I guess, is that the D E P doesn't seek a copy of the town's approval before they issue a permit, and so my request to the board. And so my request of the board, which has been granted in the past, is just to condition the approval so that I don't need to bring in a copy of the DEP approval. It's just approved, but I can't start until I have all of the approvals combined. And just, all that does is just eliminate a step of me having to come in and certify that if it ends up lagging. You just send a copy to Joel and we're good to go.
And I think that the board's reply to that was that there may be items in the DEP approval that the board would like to know about prior to giving final approval. And the previous application that we just approved is a good example where the board deemed that there were some additional conditions of approval that directly related from the DEP permit. And if we had granted you that waiver, that those conditions of approval never would have made it into the application or into the approval process.
Yeah, so I'm looking at the board, it's like, I don't see those as make or break conditions. So I guess that's for the board to decide. I don't know if you guys see this. There's two different ways of looking at this and I think have explained, you know, where I stand. And obviously you've got one member of the board that feels differently. And so just looking at the rest of the board is, I wanted to bleep my case one more time and present some evidence that was, I was told was lacking in my last request.
I guess my question is, do you have any idea when your new application to DEP is going to be approved, or?
No, there's been some staffing shortages, so things have just kind of gotten extended.
Extended, okay.
I don't know, and, you know, I don't know if it makes more sense to talk about this after the application's deemed complete, or if this is preventing the application from being deemed complete. But I think like, the last time I brought this application in, it was kind of my personal opinion that we got into like discussing stuff related to conditions and criteria of approval before the application was deemed complete. So my plea, I guess, would be that we focus on whether the application's complete. Because if it's not complete, I'd like to make sure it's right the next time.
Yeah.
Anybody sense?
So the waiver is not something to be discussed at the moment, since we're looking at if the application is complete or incomplete. Not necessarily in accordance to what the board wants. It's just, is the application complete?
It certainly looks better than the last time I presented it.
It certainly does.
Well, gentlemen, is the application complete in your mind, eyes, inside?
Yes, I have, I'm happy with the application.
First?
I'm okay with it.
This is at least the third time I've looked at it. And now that things have been explained, almost bridges are already there. Okay.
You gotta get out one, dude.
Huh?
You gotta get out one, you'll take a ride.
Gooch, if you'd like some help, this is our review from Coral Palmer for completeness.
I, that's, this one?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So let's see. Their thoughts are...
Oh, is it just one page?
Yes.
So Jones, is the list that'll kind of be used in the future to determine completeness?
We're working with Coral.
It'd just be really helpful for me to have a checklist to go down to.
Yeah, we're working with Coral to see, do we like this? We would like a conclusion statement at the end, once we get everything from them.
Yep.
I was gonna say, engineer info on plan. Okay, what are we talking about?
Have you got your book out?
So I thought you were gonna say that. E what?
The title, boundary lines of any zoning or land management district boundaries? No, that's IX, excuse me, this is XI. Location, ground floor area, and height of buildings and other structures within 500 feet of the site. That's on page 44 of the UDRO. And it's in, we're talking about section 10, which is what needs to be in the application. And this part of that is doing with drawings. And at the top of page 44, you should have sub subsection XI, location.
We never required that before, have we?
It's, well, it's in the applica, it's in the long list of, what, 83 or 85 or 86 or 87 required things in the application? Are there any buildings within 500 feet of the?
Well, thinking of the chairlift, I don't think so. The trail definitely goes by one or two houses that are probably within 500 feet of the trail.
Built or in the process of being built?
Built.
Built.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be a big deal for you to put the CAD drawing symbol for a house down where it belongs, or would it be?
Yeah. Is that like something that holds up the determination that it's complete? Or is it just something that would be added as additional info after it's completed?
You could, if you promised me on your UDR, a copy of your UDRO that you would insert it, it would satisfy my requirements.
Yep.
BI says, name, address, and number of licensed professional engineer, professional land surveyor, or planner who prepared the plan.
Oh, yeah, Peter, your name's not on the plan.
It's in the application and the full-size sheets are stamped.
Okay.
So...
Which I will be sending to Coral Palmer. I didn't have them to send originally.
Okay, I was just saying his name and his address are in the application.
Right.
They'll notice his license.
And the full-scale drawings will have his stamp on it.
Okay. And you said you're gonna do that.
Yeah, I have, I actually have a copy in my car if you don't mind.
Okay. So?
Formats, or what?
Yeah, to keep my carpets from getting dirty.
So we can put a checklist around that one.
I just wrote, we'll add.
Okay.
And I think your prior, your prior application probably had copied the corporate registration, although I don't think that's in question for something.
I've always just said that it's on file with the town, but I'm sure you can find it online if you want.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yeah, all of us know it exists.
Correct. At least.
It's supposed to be in here, too.
Right.
I can add that on the revision if you want.
Yeah, we dot that I, make that...
You're looking for a certificate of consent?
I'd be on the one.
I guess I did, Peter.
All right.
The electronic version, Coral Palmer didn't have your signed, it was just me.
Yeah, I'm used to working with a state where I'll send them an unsigned copy and they mark it up and then send it back and then go back and forth. And then when there's no marks left on it, then I sign it.
Kind of like what you do with us.
Okay, I guess I'm stuck.
I think you're looking for a motion that it's complete.
Well, I thought I would do that, but I was not quite sure if I was prepared for that.
Oh, okay.
I guess we're prepared for that.
What are you stuck on, or what do you think you're stuck on? Do I dare ask?
Well, one part of me says, okay, I think we have a complete application. And the other part of me says, behold, what about E 11? Do we want to hold up on that drawing, or?
I, my personal feeling is given the location and the type of application that while it needs to be on the drawing, it's not something to hold up the application, especially if the applicant has said that you'll insert those in future revisions of the drawing.
Okay. Guess I'll go out on the diving board. I make a motion that the application is complete.
Oh, second thing?
The move in second is that the application is complete. All those in favor?
One.
Two, three. Okay. Is the site, is it recommended for this project?
Certainly better now than it was in February.
Well, in some ways. Mr. Chairman, the applicant is suggesting two access sites to the project.
I noticed that, which are not, if their existence, they're overgrown from prior logging materials.
That might be something that the board would like to review.
More what, you said?
That the board might want to visually see where they're going to be in person as opposed to a drawing. Also, given the terrain that we're dealing with, especially around the base area, I don't know if the board would be interested in looking at that area to see exactly where the base terminal is going to be and how the contours look in real life.
Has that, has that area been kind of cleared a little bit there where the base is gonna be?
We've had a survey line. So there's, if you hoof it up in the woods, you can see a red flag line and knock down all the brush.
But it's not that little clearing area by Trillium then? I mean, there's like an area that looks like it's been cleared a little bit.
It's up, it's up in the woods a ways, you'd have to really look to see it. And it's probably the width of the stable that's cleared.
There's also a wetland right there along Monkey Brook Road, close to the base terminal. And if you look at the drawing number three, when they put in the roundabout trail, yet to be named, there is a lot of proposed contours, rather steep, on either side of the trail. And specifically between the trail and the wetland. There's also several culverts going in there. Again, it might be the board's interest to look at that, seeing that runoff, stormwater runoff of this area eventually makes its way across Monkey Brook Road into Mahouset Glen subdivision. And so having a site visit would allow the applicant to better explain and assure us that proper storm water mitigation procedures would be effective.
Okay, all these gradient lines are post-construction?
Typically, we do dashed for existing and solid lines for post-construction proposed.
But if you look, if you look at that roundabout trail on drawing number three, the one that goes down the left side of the page and then it cuts across at the top of the page following Monkey Brook Road, that, the contour lines that are on either side of the trail are new contour lines that will be as a result of constructing the trail. Am I not, am I correct?
Yeah, it's gonna be, have to fill like a road.
And, and so, since skiers don't like to ski on a double gradient, they're gonna flatten the trail so that it only goes downhill in one direction. But that requires filling and cutting. And so it will alter the gradient on either side of the trail as depicted here, which will also potentially, if not properly mitigated, aggravate stormwater runoff. And again, a site visit may allow the applicant opportunity to address that in the at-scene situation and better explain the procedures that they will put in place to, to make sure that stormwater runoff does not become a headache to people on Mahouset Glen subdivision.
Something like from last Monday.
Well, there appears to be an existing runoff, for lack of a better term, to the left of where that access road starts. And roughly in the middle of that access road.
Yes. You're talking about the northern, the northernmost access road?
Yep.
Because there's a second access road that's further up Monkey Brook Road.
On sheet two?
And I believe that's in sheet two. Actually, it's down there on sheet one, on sheet three, two.
I only see the one stabilized construction entrance on sheet three, six. What am I missing?
Well, it says sheet four.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm incorrect on that one. I goofed up with the Morgonite trap. If you look, it says sheet four, that's where the, that would be the westernmost access site, correct?
Yes.
Further up Monkey Brook Road. And there's actually an old log landing there that you're gonna be using for...
So we don't have to skid trees across Morgonite way?
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, I know what that is. That's, that's already existing.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And it actually looks flat.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty grown up, like Ted said, but there, at one time was a road that went up, maybe under guards, and it was a pretty good flat area up there. So I think the disturbance would be the minimal, we'll just kind of use what's existing. And build a little bridge right up the way to the trail so you can haul wood down right in that old ground there.
And is there a natural drainage next to it?
Yeah, when they built the... logging road, they ditched the uphill side of it and
Ah.
scraped it out. Pretty, pretty dish.
Okay, I was wondering how come that sort of ended.
You know, are you, is any of those two access strips?
Um.
I don't see why we would. Consider that you consider it, please.
Yeah, I guess if that's something that you guys think is necessary, happy to talk about it.
Consider it.
So you would leave both of them?
Well, I don't think we're going to leave them in like a state that we would use them as a regular driveway or parking area, but usually close it out the same way.
Oh, I, I misinterpreted it. I thought that that was that those are going to be permanent access points.
No, the construction entrance is not intended to be permanent. I think if we needed to get a crane up to it.
So both the northern one and the western one didn't go away or be left to fill in or?
Well, I think we would try to close it off the same way you go to logging road and just put water bars in them and put hay on them.
So this access road would be re-vegetated according to procedure.
So with that, and I, I don't want to get in, I, I understand your concern about, well, the application's been voted complete, so, you know, I'll sit for that. My concern would be without one of that, especially that northern access route to the lift station, that a resourceful lift maintenance individual will cut a trail to get to the base of a lift from Monkey Brook to make their life easier.
Yeah, I think if we needed to get a crane to the bottom of the lift, we'd probably have to resurrect that temporary access line for sure.
But just the daily, on their daily lift maintenance, I can, I'm concerned that, that a endeavorous or resourceful lift maintenance person will make their own trail to the base of the lift so that they can easily access it without having to take an ATV or to over hill and dale to get to it. And they can just drive up Monkey Brook, park on the side of the road and or drive up this improvised driveway to the base of the lift.
So would it be better to leave it permanent so that we can use it in the future?
Well, the northerly one is going to be a little hard to leave permanent because it utilizes a lot of a ski trail.
Yeah, it's, it's just going to be to get you up onto the ski trail because we're going to need to get a crane up there and concrete trucks and flatbeds with all the structural steel and stuff like that.
I'm going to speak from a public safety standpoint. It doesn't need to be big. It doesn't need to be large, but to be able to pull an ambulance into that construction entrance might be kind of handy.
Although, the applicant has already addressed that. In his MO.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it was not intended to be permanent. If the board thinks it should be permanent, happy to discuss it. I-
You might want to discuss it with your lift maintenance people because they're the ones who are going to be cursing.
Or ignoring.
Or ignoring you, playing.
Going for it, yeah.
When, when it comes to time to do their daily checks and everything else and, you know, and they go down, there's no ATV available because they're all been checked out and now the, you know, you just drive their pickup truck up and park it on the side of Monkey Brook Road and going in with a bunch of loppers and next thing you know, you have a
You have a road.
Unapproved, unapproved access and they'll probably choose to go through the wetland.
Coming off the Monkey Brook Road, it's going to have to be a mountain to get to that lift.
Well, not if you go in through the old logging road that, the northern entrance there.
Right, and then you just walk down.
And you just walk down and in the summertime when they're doing lift maintenance and whatnot, the H, the pickup truck would be able to do that without any problem. Especially if a concrete mixer is going to get up there at some point.
Are you going to, he'll drop the towers in? You're going to, he'll drop, he'll, he'll drop the towers in?
I think there's three towers left to use a helicopter for.
And you do the same with concrete?
Uh, yeah, for three towers.
With just three towers?
Or the other way we've done it is to put a concrete bucket on a cable skater and just haul it down like that.
Oh my, I've never seen that trick before. The water will gain.
Probably not a very well emotional tool to do that.
I don't want to go there.
The question on the board right now is, do we want to do a site visit or not?
Bruce?
You know, I, I guess not something that I'm going to be stretching up, you know, Mount Everest or anything like that, but I mean, I would, I would like to see, get some idea. You know, peripheral or, or close to idea of, of where this is actually going.
My opinion is, given the, the public interest in this client, this application, that as well as being informative to the board to see the layout of the land, it would also be an opportunity for the applicant to address and answer many questions from the general public at the same time.
I mean, I can just pump my four wheeler and meet y'all up there, so.
I just had a heart attack and I don't have a four wheeler.
I, I want to reiterate that this is not something we should be going to individually. This site isn't, we go all together and advertise.
Advertised and open to the public, et cetera, et cetera.
Just saying it out loud.
Yes, we are.
And, and somebody will, whoever will provide a little bus for us?
I don't know who the bus driver is.
We can all get in the back of the pickup truck.
I prefer a helicopter.
They're seventy-five thousand dollars a day, so it probably won't start for that.
Yeah, I'll break the, I'll break the budget.
Okay. Oh, pictures of helicopters.
Well, I was going for the bottom half. The calendar part.
Oh, the calendar part? I thought you were going for the helicopters.
You're going to schedule a schedule that, I thought maybe.
You can't afford that.
Calendar would be nice. Well, it should just be the next planning board meeting.
You need a lot more than a half hour. Um, let's see. I'm going to make a motion that we have a site visit. Would anybody like to prun, to second that? I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that we have a site visit. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three.
Okay, we're going to have a site visit. Next question is, land. The next planning board meeting is going to be the seventeenth. Would you like to meet up there at five o'clock?
We may want to coordinate this with the next item on the checkoff list, which is public hearing.
This is true.
I think we want to do them both the same night.
That's what we've been with the past.
Hmm, okay.
Occasionally we do a site visit, public hearing, then planning board meeting.
Okay, well, that, that works for me if we have the, if we have the site visit and then we can be reconvened down here. Unless you're going to provide a big, big table with refreshments up there, but then the bugs will be out right then.
Squeeze a seat.
I'm not taking minutes up there. You're on your own.
Okay.
Do, does the town have enough time in the two weeks?
To advertise?
To advertise.
I'm going to get right on this first thing tomorrow? Yep.
And will we be able to get the required number of notices? In between then and now?
You mean in the newspaper?
In the newspaper.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion that we have the public hearing following the site visit. I'll second that motion.
On the, on the date of?
The seventeenth. Seventeenth of May.
I will.
Um, all those in favor?
One, two.
Three. Okay, so we're going to have a site visit at five o'clock?
Works for me.
Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah. I know that.
And the next question is, do we have the public hearing in this location or do we have it in the Grange Hall?
I would say this location.
I would say this location.
Okay. We will have it in this location then. Um, following the site visit and following the public hearing, we will have a planning board meeting, assuming that it occurs before eight thirty. How's that sound?
Can you give a timeframe on the public hearing? We have it passed.
Well, it's up for me at five, if we're, we should be-
Back here at six thirty, the standard meeting time.
Yeah, yeah. Yes, that would give us time to get the mud off, the cleats of our shoes and whatnot.
Mm-hmm, so the public hearing is from six thirty to seven and then the-
Yeah, it's public hearing.
We're going a half hour to seven?
Half hour?
Well, the public hearing, do we have to state the any time or just the convenient time?
It's usually posted. We don't usually put an end to end time on a public hearing. We just do the when we're going to have it and see how long it goes. If it goes until eight thirty, then we don't going to have a meeting. We close a public hearing, we come back two weeks later for another meeting. I don't, I don't want to limit the public's input. No, well, in the past though, it hasn't only been that public hearing for that one agenda item, we've had other agenda items on. We don't have anything for the seventeenth, so, yeah. All we have is Merrill Hill. I mean, these guys have always had like a a time. But that's, I don't know what other times it should be.
I would just put a convenient time.
We don't, select board meetings don't put an end time on their public hearings. So we're, we, no, we're not doing that.
Okay, so we will convene a public hearing at six thirty. And we will convene a planning board meeting when the public-
We don't need to say, we don't need to go into that. We have our regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
Okay.
Trying to limit the advertising block. We don't need to go into all that.
We don't need to go into ninety-five dollars.
Come on!
No, it's his fee. He pays for this.
I didn't know that. I'm sorry. I didn't want to spend your money. It's not my personal money. Thank you.
That's right.
So can we get a helicopter?
So I need to figure out, I'm going to give an address for the site.
Like a northern and eastern?
I might say that we convene at the-
Are there any nine-one-one addresses on Monkey Brook Road up in that area?
No.
That have been issued?
Nope.
There is at least one.
Well, that's David, no.
My best on Trillium, that is.
Would you like to convene at the summit parking lot? We'll go from there.
Or the golf course parking lot.
I would say the golf.
Golf course parking lot seems a little more reasonable.
I was going to park on Trillium.
Just park on the road?
Mm-hmm.
That is-
Trillium, not Monkey Brook Road. Trillium Road.
That is, that's a private, that's a private drive and the, not, doesn't belong to the applicant.
True, okay.
Morgonite Way would work too.
Yeah, we can park on Morgonite.
Okay. Is that the garden? No, that's not the garden.
The intersection of Morgonite Way.
The second, the second entrance.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So we're going to meet at Morgonite and Monkey Brook.
Right, the second entrance to Morgonite.
Yeah, second entrance.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
The northwest, the north, northwest, the westernmost entrance to Morgonite.
Okay.
One just past Oldness.
One just past.
I might, is there anybody in the sign factor?
Right across from.
Oldness, yeah.
Um, he's here this week. He's on here now. But he's available if we need a sign. Just wanted to be just wanted to sign for him to-
Site plan.
Right. Meeting.
Yeah, I think we could probably print the, I'll talk to him.
He just does the, the plastic corking and all that stuff. Yeah, it doesn't have to be fancy.
Storage board from transportation.
Perfect, whatever, yeah.
Maybe one at the gatehouse. That's a pretty good place.
Just want to make sure that we have the advertising law and, and we can, everyone can locate it. That's my biggest concern.
Hide the sign and words and say, oh, we came home.
Yes. All right, okay. I'll get this out tomorrow.
Okay, site visit.
Yes.
And last but not least, is it desirable or do we want to invite our engineering consultant to this or not? That would be for a fee, without a doubt.
Don't look at me. I don't vote.
Uh, we're, we're spending money.
I think the questions you've come up with at a site visit in public hearing might be better if we put them together in minutes and then they can go to Oral Palmer.
That sounds like a better idea.
I do know that, right?
But you'll have, we'll have one of these.
I don't know. I've never gotten minutes from a site visit. I've only done, I've attended public hearings and taken minutes and-
Well, I think if notes are taken by the board members and butters at the site visit, then they could go on record at the public hearing.
There we go. Okay, I've never been given notes or in the, for site visits. It always just-
Okay, so we'll, we'll get GP involved afterwards and-
Rather than spending money on their travel time. Okay. I have a public hearing, I have a site visit. Are any waivers requested?
Although, how will the applicant meet the performance guarantee requirement?
Oh. Okay. Will the applicant meet the performance guarantee requirement? How will he be? Hold it. Did we require such a thing for Barker, cheerleader?
The performance?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
We did.
We did.
Okay.
First, first point of order. Can we proceed on with reviewing the application without the public hearing being held or is this game or can we? Do we have a parliamentarian who can rule on that?
Good. Um, you guys added additional conditions of approval after everything else been approved on the last application, so it doesn't seem like it'd be hard to do that again.
Okay, that's fine. I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm okay proceeding up until we get to conditions of approval.
So your question is under the heading of, is a public hearing recommended for this project? The first dotted line with a dot at the end of it is, application must be found complete before public hearing. State law.
That, that is correct, but I guess what we need to do then is we need to go in and check what the-
You've already done that. You've found it complete.
You've found it complete.
Yes, I know we found it complete. That's not the question. The question is, is the provisions for a public hearing, is, is there anything perhaps that prevents us from proceeding, reviewing the application until the public hearing has been held, now that we've have decided to have one?
You have to have tough questions, Dave. Well, it's right. Thirty-seven will start. On-site visits. The planning board may schedule onsite visits at their discretion. The planning board shall give public notice of site visits.
I don't see anything that says we can't proceed with that, although in section three- I don't see anything that says we can't proceed with that, although in, um, section three, subsection G, where it talks about public hearings, uh, there is a requirement for the applicant to notify with certified mail receipt all the property owners within one thousand feet of the project site, including owners of property on the opposite side of the road. I guess I probably should add river tubing.
Has happened then.
Well, that's for a butters, this is for a public hearing.
The butters, is there an actual listing of that someplace? Like a mailing list?
Yeah, it's in the application, yeah, yeah.
Public hearing shall be held with...
Like two, because it got changed, so...
Okay, I just didn't see it, that's all I wondered.
Yeah, they might not have got the one I emailed to Peter. So I, I can forward that to you, yeah.
So I, I don't see any, anything that prohibits us from proceeding considerations of this application before the public hearing.
Yeah, it says it can't be, right?
So if the applicant is sending out the notice of...
Just as a side note, there, um, section three, subsection G, public hearings, there is a responsibility for the applicant to do some notifications.
Right.
Well, on page thirty-eight, I don't see anything...
Big sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Yeah, section three.
Section three, that...
Well, I read one different section.
So while the board's looking at that, do you have the county attorney's reply on performance guarantees handed or...
Not, not handed.
Okay, the, we're talking about required infrastructure.
They, didn't we hand that out once already?
Yes, I know we handed it out once already. I don't have it with my, with this application. I was wondering if you had it anywhere handy or not? And I don't mean to distract, while the board is talking about this, is just getting rid of it.
I do not have it.
I don't see why we can't...
No, I don't. I don't see why we can't.
Because I can't find anything that says that we cannot.
Continue with criteria approval.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, look at thirty-eight, ten and eleven.
Yeah, that did prevent us from...
No, no.
No, both of those, section ten and section three, don't have anything that would prohibit us from, or having to stop and table the application at this time?
Yep, I, I agree.
So we can move on, we can then move on?
Okay.
Are you looking for that?
Don't worry about it.
Well, well, I don't know. You can't tell you what that is.
Thompson Perkins, that?
Yeah, that's a, is this the one that talks about performance guarantee, since the budget's in the page? Thank you.
I need it back.
Okay. So we've satisfied everything about the public hearing?
Yes, of course. Or the point of orders have been satisfied?
Okay. So, we are now on, how will the applicant meet the performance guarantee requirement? I guess the next question is, how much is the performance guarantee supposed to be?
Yeah, since a letter, um, at the last meeting that kind of gave some more budget detail, this was a budget letter that I'd sent originally, it was pretty, um...
Is it the one dated April eighteen?
Yep. Um, so I broke out some more details in the budget, so I could kind of clear what costs are going in my pocket. Um, I did have some disclosure agreements, so, uh, careful how far I break these down. Um, but then, at the end, I, um, requested that, or suggested to the board that the performance guarantee isn't applicable to the project. Um, because there's a definition of infrastructure in the U D R O, but not a definition of required infrastructure. So, none of the infrastructure improvements that are in the definition of infrastructure in the U D R O are being put in, um, so I just suggested that it's not applicable. Do you copy that?
Yes, I think I do. Um, I guess the question is, is we required it for the new lift, that's from the D to P, I'm coming out of wiring for this lift.
So, Peter, just to, to clarify, you're, you're stating because there is no required infrastructure that impacts out the town road or something? Is that what you're, is that your interpretation of, or how you are applying required infrastructure?
Yeah, you want me to read what I wrote?
If you would, that way the audience can also...
Yep, so, new U D R O, section twenty-one A, states that the applicant must provide a performance guarantee equal to ten percent of the value of quote-unquote, "required infrastructure improvements," end quote. Uh, new U D R O, section twenty-four B, defines, quote, "required infrastructure improvements," end quote, as follows, quote, "roads, drainage and stormwater systems, cisterns and fire ponds, multi-user water and sewer systems, whether public or private," end quote. Um, these sections, twenty-one A and twenty-four B, do not define the word "required," so we suggest that a performance guarantee is not applicable to the project due to the fact that none of the following infrastructure improvements are required by the town or state for the approval of the project. Uh, roads, stream crossings, stormwater detention, retention, or treatment structures, like we had on the other lift, um, cisterns, fire ponds, or multi-user water and sewer systems.
So you're, you're saying that on the storm management system that you're gonna be first run off, that you're gonna be, with this project are not gonna be required by, as a, because they're on your plan?
What do you mean?
Well, why?
I was questioning that, go ahead, huh?
Well, it sounds to me like stormwater management is part of what you just read to me, if I heard it correctly, was required infrastructure.
Yeah, stormwater detention, stormwater retention, stormwater buffering, stormwater treatment. Um, none of that's applicable to the project because we're not, um, doing anything that would require flood control or doing anything that would require, like the D E P, chapter five hundred, uh, the general standard for like stormwater buffering.
Yeah, there's no ponds, there's no filters, there's no...
Right, understood.
Yeah.
That, so the, the drainage systems, the stormwater management systems that you're putting in, you're saying that doesn't fall into that criteria? So the culverts and erosion control and all that isn't gonna be...
Yes, since the, um, like, we don't have any jurisdictional stream crossings or anything like that, uh, it'd be my interpretation that that wouldn't qualify as required infrastructure according to the ordinance's definition.
Okay.
You happy?
I'm not sure.
He's got a point though.
I'd like to hear what my fellow board members had to say.
Well, he's got a point.
That's sort of what I was thinking.
Who has a point?
Peter.
Peter has a point.
Yeah.
So, basically, it's a, on a, on a on-the-ground engineering project. It's simpler than the other projects.
Yeah, so the, the, chapter five hundred general standard says if you're subject to site law, uh, which we are because of our size, then you have to capture ninety-five percent of runoff coming from impervious surfaces like roads, parking lots, roofs, and then you have to detain and buffer it. Um, and so there's a number of ways to do that. The smallest footprint structure with a practical cost assigned to it is the grassed underdrain soil filter that we did on the Barker lift. So I favor those, um, where they're needed, just because they're, you know, you can buy like a manufactured proprietary treatment filter, but they tend to be expensive for what you get. Um, and so these are kind of like the smallest footprint you can get without spending a ton of money. Um, so that's what I used on the Barker lift project to capture all the roof runoff. Um, and so the purpose of that, um, is mostly thermal buffering for streams, for Brett Travis and Salmon. Because if you build a, you know, large building or a parking lot and then you get a, like, summer rain for a couple hours, the temperature of the streams will spike really bad. And so, basically, you're just grabbing all that hot water and letting it sit for twenty-four to forty-eight hours and then releasing it slowly.
And this has no impervious surfaces to speak of?
No, you've got the operator enclosure of the lift, um, and some concrete footings, but my discussions with the D E P with various project managers have just been that the amount of impervious surface is so negligible, um, that it would be impractical to capture and treat it, and it's generally surrounded by, uh, meadow grass or woods, so...
And the, the roof structure of the lift itself?
No, they only look at impervious ground surface, so it would only be the concrete column.
Really?
So, for example, a solar farm, the total impervious surface of the solar farm is only the accumulation of all the sonotubes that the solar panels...
Really?
Really?
Wow.
And, okay, uh, what about your two bridge structures?
Well, they're, um...
Are they not part of the road that, that they're crossing?
What do you mean?
Well, the, it says here, the, from the roads, drainage, and stormwater systems, cisterns and fire ponds, multi-user water and sewer system. Well, okay, you're, you're doing two bridges that impact Morgonite Way, so why would they not be considered infra, required infrastructure?
They're ski bridges.
But they are, impact the road, do they not?
I'm trying to design them not to, so my...
They go over the road, that's gonna impact the road.
Um, I, yeah, I guess my interpretation is that that's not road infrastructure, but there's probably more than one way to look at it.
Mm-hmm. Oh, that's interesting. What do...
But the road's already impervious.
The road's already there.
Because it's tarred, even if it's dirt.
But part of the, part of the reason for the performance guarantee in this case is so that the HOA doesn't get stuck with a half-built bridge over one of its roads.
We own the road.
At the moment. Correct?
We own the road and have retained ownership of it, so the HOA does not own any of the roads that go through Merrill Hill. They're all owned by Sunday River.
And they will, that will continue throughout the development and completed?
That's how the homeowners association documents are written up, yeah.
So when the app, when the developer's control period is expired and the subdivision's turned over to the HOA, the HOA will not be responsible for road maintenance, plowing, et cetera? Of the roads in Merrill Hill?
They would be financially responsible, but we retain ownership of the road, similar to a town-owned road where the taxpayers are responsible for paying for the maintenance of the road through their taxes, but they don't own the road. The town owns the road, if that makes sense?
But they could, the subdivision could conceivably, not likely, but conceivably get stuck with one or two incomplete bridges?
Yeah, I don't think that that would prevent the passage of traffic, though.
Okay, okay, good reply.
Yeah, the road's already there, it's a ski trail, isn't it? My thought. No, it's true.
Okay. Looking at all the angles.
Yeah, that's all right. It's where we pay your big bucks.
At least coming up here, isn't it?
Where were we?
I think we're considering performance guarantee.
Oh, yeah. It sounds like we can let it slide.
I don't know if I'm gonna use that word on tape.
Okay, uh, wrong word. Suggest a better word.
That you declare the value of infrastructure?
That I declare the value of infrastructure?
And then apply ten percent of that to that required infrastructure?
So on your list, Peter, is there a, is there a line entitled "infrastructure"?
No, nope. I guess that, um, all of the things that I listed don't fall into any of the categories in the budget breakdown that I made, so that was why I suggested that it wouldn't be applicable in this circumstance.
So that would be the value of...
Nothing. That's a bad word again, I'm sorry.
So the bad, the required infrastructure value is how much?
Sounds like it's zero.
And ten percent of zero is...
Still zero.
Still zero.
When I was in this building, it was. So, can we, at the end of that question, amount of performance guarantee, we can put zero in there?
The section twenty-four, twenty-three? That, that talks about performance guarantees, says that the board cannot waive a performance guarantee. So the board needs to come up with a value of required infrastructure value, and in this case, apply ten percent to that value.
No.
So if the board determines that there is no required infrastructure, then the math is relatively easy.
So I could make a motion that the performance guarantee requirement that the application will meet will be zero, and ten percent of that zero performance guarantee will be zero. Does that make sense?
Probably Becky can make sense out of it.
I'll listen to the tape, I think you said it.
You got all that, Becky?
No, but I have on tape.
You got it on tape? Um... I'll second that. So who seconded that the amount of the performance guarantee is zero, with all the calculations to go along with it? All those in favor?
One.
Two, three. Okay, we've settled that. Okay, next question. Any waivers considered, requested, requested? Now, that was... Was that a waiver that you requested that we approve this before DEP approval is in?
I think the way I wrote the waiver was that we would submit a copy of the DEP permit to the town before we start construction, but not necessarily have to go on record with the planning board with it.
And it's entirely possible that by the seventeenth, the DEP approval will be in?
Possible, yeah.
Possible. Don't hold me back.
I'm not holding you back.
Thoughts, gentlemen?
Now, as we... Excuse me. As we established in Application 23-276, which we just approved, and the same waiver was made, and the board denied the waiver, I will make the same argument again, that, one, the UDRO states that all federal, state, and other permits be issued and approved prior to planning board final approval. In so doing, it protects the town to have the final say in the project. And for that reason, I would vote against a motion to grant the waiver.
Thoughts, Bruce?
Why don't you have a second, and then discussion, because Peter raised his hand too. Well, no one actually made a motion.
I don't think there's been a motion yet.
No.
No, 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 no. I was just giving my opinion.
They could vote against the motion.
Sorry.
Peter?
Well, there's also a section in the UDRO that allows for waivers, and so I tried to explain a little bit of why I think this waiver is justifiable. So I don't know if you guys have read that, but I just wanted to throw it out there that waivers, you know, there's a procedure for waivers, and there's kind of a general statement of what type of waivers are allowed and what type of waivers aren't allowed.
Oh, did we already go over that once tonight? I can't remember.
Section 22A is the applicant's accurate. Twenty-one day.
Yeah, I know. Looking for something else that we went over tonight, but I can't remember where it is. I'm playing it either.
Perhaps page thirty-eight?
Another second.
Section ten, subsection B, sub-subsection twelve, sub-sub subsection B.
Thirty-eight, twelve, D.
Section ten, subsection B, sub-subsection twelve, sub-sub subsection B, which is on page thirty-eight. It says, "Applicants shall prove receipt of all applicable state, federal, and other required permits."
So I'm not asking for a waiver from having an approved receipt, just asking for a waiver to have the approved receipt prior to approval by the board. You automatically get those anyway, right?
So is that a condition of approval, all of them, that the applicant will supply the permit?
The argument I put forth in the previous application was that once the applicant has final approval from this board, it will take a lot of effort to reopen up the application to affect any... Anything that comes up from the DEP permit. And I will point to the fact that as a result of the DEP permit for the previous application, we added three conditions of approval to the final approval for application. We will not be in a position to do something like that if we have already granted final approval. And we would have to go through all the hoops to bring the applicant in, reopen the application, and go through all that procedure again. I would prefer that we maintain our right of final approval as the town, and that once all the other permits that the applicant's required to obtain be provided and shown proof of receipt, and opportunity for the board to review, that we then proceed to grant final approval, as we did just a short while ago on the previous application.
So are you thinking that you want the same conditions of approval that you...
I am... I do not know what will be in the DEP permit, in its findings of facts, its conclusions, and its conditions. And therefore, I feel that the board should reserve the right to be able to review in detail the findings of fact, the conclusions, and conditions of any permit that's being issued by an agency outside of this board, prior to the board granting final approval.
All right, so my... I guess my counterargument to the board is, you know, I'll give you copies of whatever historical permits you want, if you want to see what a typical finding of fact or conditions of approval looks like. The reason for requesting a waiver is tied to schedule, and so it worked out conveniently, I guess, that we got our permit on Monday and came to the planning board on Wednesday, but we get into a situation where we have approval from the planning board and then get the permit from DEP the next day, and then I've got thirteen days where I'm sitting around with all my permits, waiting for final approval from the town. And so that's the driver of the request for the waiver. And I, you know, looking through the waiver requirements, I don't see anything in there that would suggest that it's the type of waiver that wouldn't be allowed by the UDRO, and that's also why I presented some of the other, you know, state and federal permits with similar language. And I'm just saying that no other... No construction can start until all your other permits are lined up. And I don't have an issue with giving the town a copy of the permit, it's just more on the timing of, you know, when we do it.
Joel, what's the requirement for a special planning board meeting?
Same as it would be for any special meeting, it's known to see with paper, public notification, but getting the...
Would it have to be in the paper?
Yes. Any public meeting that's not typically scheduled...
Not just on the website or posted at the post office?
It has to go in the newspaper, in the newspaper, in the post office, and we typically do Stony Brook General Store.
I still hold to my argument. I don't see that a thirteen-day delay will be critical to the...
I don't either, since we're going to have a hearing and a...
It's anyways... Well, we've already deemed the application complete.
The application complete, yes.
So we have to make a decision within thirty days?
Since we have elected or voted to have a public hearing, at the conclusion of the public hearing, we will have thirty days to either approve the final approval or final denial to the application. So the thirty-day clock will start...
Then, not now.
Not now.
One part of me agrees with what Ted says. Another part of me says, "Hold it. We've always just granted these things with the... With the belief, I guess, that DEP was going to follow, DEP's decision was going to follow. And, yes, Ted, these have never been reopened. If DEP came across with things that we didn't come across, meth..."
Well, if DEP comes across with conditions of approval, they may not be conditional to the town's permit, but they're conditional to the permit set as a whole, if that makes sense. So like, everything that we put on the town permit drawings were already attached as conditions of approval to a different permit to the project. So like, from my perspective, we didn't really add anything. We just added a new person that that stuff had to be submitted to. And Joel asked me for stuff like that, I've never... I don't think I've ever turned her down.
No.
Thoughts, Bruce?
You know, I just... I'm wavering, you know, because it makes sense that we wait because in case... In case something happens, to protect the town, you know, to back up and protect the town. Because like you say, I mean, to reopen something like that or to go backwards is more work than it's worth it. And I think a thirteen-day or something like that meeting is... I don't think it's an issue, you know, to wait another two weeks to see if we can move forward with that. Hopefully the purpose will come in.
Well, one part of me says...
Oh!
We could be just spinning our wheels in the mud here, because by the time the public hearing comes along, DEP could be here with their decision. And the other part of me goes, "Yeah, it could be sixty days," so...
They've had the permit since November?
September.
September.
But I asked them to, like, just like with you guys, put their first order, because we're just being a Barker lift business schedule, so it's longer.
And we just got the Barker thing this week, right? I don't think they haven't looked at it at all.
No, we've been through many, many iterations of revisions, and I think we're closing, and I think we're at the final revision, it's just a matter of the project manager making time to actually write the permit.
Should we table this item until the next planning board meeting?
So you're suggesting that we table the application until next?
No, title the waiver question.
Well...
Yeah.
I would, if you want to do that, since I don't know... I know this board member is not ready to review conditions of approval. And I don't relish drafting conditions of approval on the fly at the board meeting.
Oh, I don't recommend it.
Therefore, in effect, by tabling the waiver request, we are in effect tabling the entire application until the next meeting.
Well, in the past, like, with the conditions of per... Criteria for approval, you would table one and move on to the next one, so I'm just curious, is that not how this process would work as well? Because we tabled, I think, three out of the twenty...
That's the criteria of approval, but before we had even the... The board's procedure requires us to do conditions of approval prior to reviewing conditions of approval.
Oh, but we did conditions of approval.
I mean, criteria. The board would like to do conditions of approval prior to going through the criteria of approval.
But on the last... On the last application, we did opposite.
The last one, no, we did. We did conditions of approval before we started the criteria of approval. Then, once we got the DEP permit, I made a motion that was approved to reopen...
The conditions.
The review of conditions of approval in order to incorporate information that came out of the DEP permit that was released just two days ago.
So that couldn't be done now?
You might want to show that checklist to Peter, so he understands how we're working, what we're working through.
No, I'm just confused why, and I'll take a copy, I'd love to have a copy, but I'm just confused why we last... We've tabled things, moved on, and gone back to them before, so I wouldn't be able to do it now.
Let me readdress this, Ted. For my ability to be prepared to discuss this application further, I would make a motion tonight to table the application until the next meeting to allow for the board to properly review the conditions of approval it wants to apply to the application, as well as to review criteria of approval that it wants to discuss and approve on the application.
Is that a motion?
No, that's just my position. Right now, I still think we're discussing the waiver, and the chair was considering making a motion to table the waiver.
Can I clarify one thing about the checklist? The checklist, it's not like set in stone...
That is correct.
Right. The only reason I created that for the chair or whoever to use is because for a while... for a while, there was a history of when an application got fully approved and it came time for me to do the finding of facts. And I reviewed all the minutes from the meetings for such an application to pull the information for the finding of facts. I would find things didn't get addressed. That should have included in the finding of facts, such as voting on whether or not you want to do a site visit or voting to say the application was complete by the time, they never even voted on that.
And we appreciate the checklist.
So that's, it's just a tickle sheet, so things don't get.
Let me throw one other thing out. I would be opposed to consider criteria of approval prior to having to hear from the public at the public hearing. That would be putting the cart in front of the horse.
I think you're right.
So while we can certainly consider the waiver requested by the applicant, I would resist discussing any conditions of approval or reviewing any criteria of approval prior to the public hearing taking place.
Well, a public hearing is to have things brought to the surface that we may not have thought about.
Correct.
Bruce? I totally agree. I mean, I think, I personally think we should table it sometimes on.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table application twenty-three dash two seventy-five for further consideration until we reconvene on, what is that, the thirteen?
Seventeen.
Eight, seventeen.
I will second that motion. It's been moved and seconded that we table application twenty-three two seventy-five until we reconvene on the seventh of King of May. All those in favor?
One.
Two.
Three. How's that?
Just maybe get a few of them now. Here, Peter, you want one of these things to have it?
Yeah.
Make copies of them so if you come back here.
Do you want a blank one?
I've got a blank one.
I have a blank one here, Becky. I got it.
Oh, you got a blank one?
Yeah, and I made a few of them. I was losing that.
Yeah, it's just, to make sure nothing's all sort of crap, but I need all five of them.
No, it makes perfect sense. It's great.
Oh. Oh, I forgot this here. I must have found back and done my homework. Okay, but for some reason, I thought that number wasn't in the book.
Can we adjourn?
No, we have not adjourned. We just.
I said, no, I said, can we?
No, we still have other business to do conduct.
Okay, we have, we have
No. It's two and a half hours.
Two and a half hours, sorry.
We've got fourteen minutes. Okay, we've discussed business A and B.
How about reports?
Now we're on to reports, yes.
I don't have any reports.
No reports?
Do I?
Well, that's where we don't have.
Yeah, I mean.
Yes, for accounts of.
The escrow accounts have been accounted for.
Are being tracked properly.
Very basic, we're gonna, I'll work with the town staff so I give these a little more detail. They're too basic. We'll work on, they're separated, which is good, but they're not, they have not. Okay, we're still having a meeting?
Okay, open discussion.
I would like to throw something out for the board to start to consider. And section thirteen of the U D R O deals with performance standards. Okay? A lot of these performance standards are applicable to the review of an application. However, they are not covered by one of our criteria of approval as defined in section five. And so I would like some guidance as, or for the board to develop some guidance or procedures on how we should deal with reviewing performance standards when considering an application. For instance, if you take a look at subsection Z of the general performance standards, there are several steps that need to be taken before construction begins after, et cetera. Does that affect, or does the board need to consider that in review in an application? Or if we go to section AA buffers and screens, where a criteria for buffers and screens are set up, yet there isn't a criteria approval in section five that directly relates to that or where that would apply. So there, we have performance, performance standards A through AE, I believe. Some may apply to an application, some may not apply to an application. But we don't have a system in place to review that. Anyway, I don't think we will resolve that tonight.
What section?
Section Z is, yes, but but the entire, well, subsection Z, section, the performance standard section itself is rather large.
And we do have someone looking at this now at AFCO, looking at the entire U D R O through to make some edits in work sessions. That should be one we look at, that's for sure.
Do we want to look at their recommendations before we?
I think we ought to make the recommendation and see how it fits.
Yes, I agree with Joel. The board needs to, to come to a decision as to how do we review performance standards when it comes to an application.
I think you need to be a sound engineer to really appreciate section Z.
I use that as an example, but I'm talking the entire section of performance standards.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I just looked at Z a lot.
Yes.
And.
That was a rather strong knee jerk reaction to the threat of windmills appearing in the town.
Yeah, I noticed that.
But there are many different performance standards, some which do not apply to one application, that might apply to another application. But as the board does not have a method, method right now to review and determine which performance standards apply to an application, nor do we have a way to review that performance standard to see if it's in compliance, if the application's in compliance with it or not. There are other performance standards which are strictly an enforcement issue. And do not concern the planning board in an application that do dictate to the code enforcement officer actions that need to be taken. So my request is that the board members can start to think a little bit about this to see if we can come up with a way of reviewing performance standards when it comes to an application. You know, do we, do we expand our criteria of approval to include our many performance standards? Or is there another way that we can review the performance standards and make sure that they are being applied to an application?
Good questions.
That's what I get paid the big bucks for. So with that seed planted, I will then yield the floor and go on to any other open discussion items.
I got nothing. You got thoughts?
No, I'm, no.
Well, I spent the last two weeks, I thought, prepping well for this meeting. But not as well as I thought. But I'm pretty well used up the evening.
I just, I just want to put, as I said, my idea was just to throw this thing out there because we do have some very detailed performance standards. And there's a witness in our review process.
Yeah, I don't remember ever going through that section.
I think we use it more on a specific basis, like if it is a windmill, you know, or if it is a mining operation, then we, then we open up that section and we review it. We don't use it as much as we could.
Well, yeah, it's a simple matter of going down and saying not applicable, kind of like what Joel Palmer did with their, with the criteria of approval. We do that with the performance sections. And even, you know, before the board meeting, we can come up with a list of approval, you know, applies or does not apply so that to expedite the board's time.
At some point, I can't remember if it was in the ordinance or if it was our attorney's recommendation that when we do go through the criteria for approval, that when something is seen as does not apply, that a motion is still made and the whole board votes that that topic doesn't apply to the application, so.
And we do that, we do that for criteria of approval.
So it shows that all board members are on the same page. It's not like something could have.
There we could do a one, one additional criteria approval would be performance standards.
Yeah.
And then, and then you could sit there and say, yes, we know they don't apply, or the following performance standard is applied.
And they've been known to a lot of the, you know, like, all this doesn't apply. It's just to give board members a chance to speak up and disagree with the.
Mr. Chairman, seeing that there's no other open discussions.
Actually, I was going to inquire, if anybody knows anything about what is going on with the lithium discussion.
There's been nothing brought to the town.
Nothing brought to the town?
Correct.
Okay, I knew it was being discussed in Augusta, but.
Well, my brain is shut down, but we watched something on some Zoom meeting. Geologists, and it was basically an overview of the lithium.
From what source?
Right now, my brain is totally not working, but I can get you the information.
Nope, I don't want it. I will enforce it because voted on by the people.
I mean, but it was an interesting Zoom meeting, just, you know, talking about basically geology and mining in Western Maine and stuff like that. And talking about, you know, all the deposits everywhere.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we adjourn this meeting of the new replanning board and reconvene here for a public hearing on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-three at six thirty P M.
Okay, no, I thought we were reconvening at five o'clock.
Is that, is that a meeting in the planning board or is that just a site?
That's a site visit, but it's actually a public meeting.
It is a public meeting.
Okay, well, then we reconvene at the entrance to Morgonite, second entrance to Morgonite Way off of Monkey Brook Road at seventeen hundred hours on May seventeenth for the purpose of a site visit to application twenty-three dash two seventy-five.
Certainly. It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn the meeting and reconvene at seventeen hundred hours on the seventeenth. All those in favor?
One, two.
Three.